Thank you, God, for bringing us together, and it is by your design. We are united in a purpose for the citizens of Tiffin. We ask for your wisdom in our discussions, causing our decisions to be just and betterment of our beloved community. Amen.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Snee.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember Horniman.
Here.
Councilmember Kayler.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
And Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
Let the record show all seven members of council are present. Minutes from March 4th, 2024, regular and committee. The whole meetings were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, or deletions on those? Seeing now the minutes will stand approved as presented. You're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Kayler.
I thank you, Madam President. The Law and Community Planning Committee plans to meet, to consider mayor's request for legislation, numbers 2415, 2416, and 2417, and any other business that may come before the committee on Monday, March 25th at 5:15 PM, right here at council chambers.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kayler. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Hayes.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and public property, Councilmember Snee.
No report, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
And economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee of the whole meeting? Okay. We are now under reports of the officers. His Honor Mayor Lee Wilkinson is absent this evening. However, City Administrator Nick Dutrow will be reporting on his behalf.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, the mayor is at a meeting at the Board of Health this evening, so I am going to give some remarks or some comments that he had. As a reminder, there is a community cleanup that is prior to the April eclipse. That will be meeting March 30th at the East Green at 9:00 AM. There is a sign up on the city's Facebook page. Look at the event on the Facebook page. You can find out more information. We do ask that folks bring their own brooms, dust pans, and gloves, though we will have some items to share with people if they come. So please check that out. I am going to introduce Adam Gilmore from the Tiffin Seneca Economic Partnership, who will be talking about the CDBG grant program.
All right. Good evening, council. Thank you, Nick, for helping to get this set up. This is the first public meeting regarding the Community Development Block Grant. The purpose of this first meeting, we are required to hold two, is to simply cover the basics of the CDBG program, the rules and regulations involved, and generally just what the program is and how it can be used. So, TSEP is currently contracted by the City of Tiffin to handle your community development, and part of that includes grant administration, which is where the CDBG grant is falling under, though there is a separate contract for that. A little bit of basics about the Community Development Block Grant. It is a federally funded grant with the primary objective of developing viable urban communities, primarily focused on low-to-moderate income individuals, specifically looking towards the creation of decent housing, a suitable living environment, or expanded economic opportunities. In Ohio, the CBG program is managed by the Ohio Department of Development and their Office of Community Development. Currently, the program is handed on an allocation basis, the Small Cities Program. There was some talk in the past about it moving towards a competitive process, and that is still likely to happen in the future. However, this year, for the program year 2024 cycle, we will be once again going forward with an allocation, meaning that the city is eligible to receive up to $150,000. If the city submits an eligible project, an application, to the Office of Community Development, and if it is an eligible project, it will be funded at that 150. You will receive a $150,000 grant. $30,000 of that is wrapped into administration and fair housing, and $120,000 typically goes out towards the project of your choice. Like I said earlier, CDBG funds must be expended to benefit one of three national objectives, one of which is the LMI component that I mentioned earlier. There is also the ability to use it to aid in the prevention of or elimination of slums or blight, as well as to meet a need of particular urgency. The simplest of these three is that LMI component, creating that benefit for them. To meet this requirement, you are able to go with a service area approach, in which the area must be 51% low to moderate income, or a project must serve a low to moderate income clientele. To meet this requirement, you know, you kind of need to focus on certain groups typically. So that can be the elderly, homeless, or severely disabled, and that is sort of just a quick, easy way to target those certain groups. Similarly, an LMI project can meet the national objective by providing or improving residential structures, which upon completion will be occupied by low to moderate income households. And then finally, job creation and retention activities aimed primarily at LMI persons are also an eligible project. Regulation under the program requires that not less than 70% of funds be used to benefit low-to-moderate income individuals, and that includes those administration costs. To talk a little bit more about administration, up to 15% of CDBG funds may be used on administrative costs associated with the grant. That is within that larger pot. This includes costs related to citizen participation, the application preparation, the grant agreement, environmental review, drawdown requests, which are handled by Kathy, record-keeping, reporting, audits and closeout, and compliance costs. CDBG is a very citizen participation-intensive process. We begin this citizen participation process about a little under a full year before the CDBG application is coming up with our Dream Big Tiffin process. We began that back in August of last year, and it was concluded at the beginning of this year, and that fulfills our public participation requirements in terms of sourcing projects and then making sure that they are, in fact, community priorities. This year, just a little bit of, to give you an idea of where we're at in that Dream Big process, we received 73 responses from Tiffin residents about what projects that we had received from the public and from the city were viewed as priorities for them. The top project was the Applejack Park Improvement, which is the project that has mostly been talked about in regards to CDBG, but that has not been finally determined yet. Just to conclude, like I said at the beginning, this is the first public meeting. There will be a second public meeting later this, or it's March, so either later this month or very early next month to go over the specific project that has been chosen by the city to move forward with. And then following that second public meeting, an enabling piece of legislation will go out to you all, which will enable TSEP to apply on the city's behalf, as well as specify exactly what that project is and how those funds ought to be spent. Applications this year are due on June 12th at 11:59 PM, so we are not under any time crunch, but the target meeting for you to all to begin having legislation to look at is your second meeting in April. Before that deadline, though, I will, of course, keep you apprised if anything comes up. I know that is a lot of information, just kind of dumped on you very quickly, but if there are any questions from you, I'm happy to answer them, and if anyone listening at home has any questions, they can email me at Gilmore, G.I.L.L.M.O.R., at tiffenceneca.org, or call our office line, 419-447-3831.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Anything else from you, City Administrator?
Yes, I just want to add and make sure citizens are aware, tomorrow is Primary Election Day. There are no city races on the ballot, but we do encourage everyone to please go to the ballot, please go to your voting location and put in your vote. Polls open tomorrow at 6:30 AM and close at 7:30 PM. If you do not know your voting location, I encourage you to seek out the Seneca County Board of Elections website, where you can find your information, as well as sample ballots to see what you expect when you go voting tomorrow. Please vote. This is the most important thing we do as citizens, and that is the mayor's report today.
Thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of things tonight. The first is, we talked a little bit in the committee in the hall, the city administrator mentioned, we do have some legislation that we would like suspended this evening, and that's Ordinance 24-26. That is a grant that the Street Department got from the Division of Forestry, and they would like to have us appropriate those funds into the budget, and they would like it suspended so that they can get started with what they want to do with that, which would be buying trees, removing trees, inventory, all those things that we kind of talked about. Just wanted to let you know, this is a reimbursement-type grant, so we have to pay first, then we send in the reimbursement requests, they get approved, and then the money comes back to us. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. So the second part of my comments tonight is the February financial report. Total receipts for the month were $4,025,965.52. Total expenses for the month were $4,424,056.51. General fund unencumbered balance is $3,917,444.50. Income tax receipts for February 2024 were $877,931.59. This is an increase year-to-date when comparing February 2024 to February 2023, and that was We were ahead 2025 compared to 2023. Total year-to-date, the increase was 4.15%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for February was $106,270.39. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $38,114,748.49, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reesner.
I move to accept the Director of Finance's report for the month and bank reconciliation for the month ending February 2024.
Thank you. There is a motion to accept the Finance Director's report for the month of February, as well as the bank reconciliation. Is there a second? Councilmember Snee.
I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Director of Law, Zach Fowler.
No report, Madam President.
Okay. We are now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 24-15, the chip for 2024.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation 24-15 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 24-16, Tax Incentive Review Council, TIRC, recommendations.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-16 will be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
And Mayor's request for legislation number 24-17, which was given to you tonight with the agenda change memo, EMS billing contract.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number 24-17 will also be assigned to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-15, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the State Highway Improvement Fund budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-15 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-24.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-16, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the TIF to South Schaefer Park Drive Fund budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-16 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-25.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-17, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the ODNR Division of Forestry Fund budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-17 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-26.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-18, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the Police Budget.
Thank you. Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-18 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-27.
And Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-19, to amend the 2024 Budget Ordinance 23-94, to appropriate funds into the Capital Improvement Budget, and reduce funds in the Quarter Percent Income Tax Public Streets Funds, and to approve a transfer from capital improvements to the 2022 Street Improvement Bonds Fund.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F24-19 is prepared tonight as Ordinance 24-28.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct your questions to myself.
Good evening, Madam President, council, city staff. I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak here for the next few minutes. My name is Scott Ballinger. I represent Aqua Ohio Incorporated, 170 Ellis Street. I'm the area manager. I oversee Tiffin, Marion, Village of Prospect, Le Rue, Caledonia, and Martel. What I want to share with you guys, with you tonight, is information about lead. Okay? Lead is a hot topic ever since the Flint, but even prior to that time, lead was an issue with the Health Department. So just to give you a little background on the timeline of lead, in the late 1800s through the 1940s, lead lines were used to provide water flow from the water main to the person's house. So that was the primary install was lead back then. The reason why lead was used, it was because it lasted twice as long as the other metals. And also, it was malleable, so it was easy to work with, it would actually bend, so you could work around structures. So that's the main reasons. And also, the lead companies used to actually go to the big cities and smaller towns and talk to the plumbing people to sell their product. About late 1940s, 1950s, when that switched over to mainly copper, and then today, it's mainly plastic. Everything that we use, and we've been using plastic for years, I'm going to say, probably since the 1970s, we've been using plastic on the company's side. We never cared what the customer always used. It didn't matter to us, we never even tracked it. So in 1988, lead was banned. So in 1991, the EPA established lead and copper rule, which was to help to control the presence of lead and copper leaching out into drinking water. Just to clarify, we do not have lead and copper in our water. It's aggressive water that will strip the inner pipe of lead and copper that would make it leach out like it did in Flint, Michigan. So Flint, Michigan, once again, because of what happened up there, thank God, it didn't happen anywhere else, but EPA made us create a lead map of our distribution system in 2016. So basically, it was a distribution grid of your whole city, and then we highlighted where we suspected our lead services to be. So and then in 2022, lead and copper rule, they did a revision, so they changed the rules. They got more stringent. So what's taking place today is we are, water companies are being mandated to take an inventory of what our service material is, and now they want us to have that inventory of the customers. We know all our service material, and when I say service, I mean the pipe running from the main to the curb stop, which is the shut-off, and then from there, it becomes the customer's responsibility into their house. So this rule is proposed, but it looks like it'll go through in October. It's called the Lead and Copper Improvement Rule. So we have to gather as much information on everybody's service material and submit it by October, I believe, 16th of 2024. And like I said, obviously, this is a big undertaking, because it's across all of Ohio. All water companies have to do this. So having the customer participate and hopefully provide us with that information is going to be crucial. That's our first step. So what we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to pass this around. We need, we have a third-party company, and we have one, that we're going to have to use to help assist us with this process. So we're going to be sending out this questionnaire to every customer that we don't know what their material is. So and then there's easy ways for that customer to respond, by phone, QR code, on the computer, mailing, they can even phone it in if they want to. And there's really good, it's on both sides of that handout. It gives you like the four main materials that are used for water lines, and it tells you, you know, magnets don't stick on them, you can scratch them easy as lead, so this is very helpful. But so far, we have sent these letters out to different divisions across Ohio that Aqua owns, and we're only getting about 20% response. So that's pretty low, but I want to get it out to you guys. So if somebody comes up to you, they think it's bogus, or, you know, File 13, I know that's going to happen, people are just going to throw it away, but we really need to encourage people to help us out to determine what their material is. So we are getting a grant from Ohio EPA, the first grant that I'm aware of that a private industry has ever gotten from EPA in my tenure, and that's at 30 years. So year one, we applied for $5 million to replace lead service line in the City of Tiffin. So that's year one. So our plan is to start here in the next couple months, replacing known Aqua lead service lines, which we have, let me see here, where's my documentation? I got too many papers. We have a little over 2,000 known company lead lines. We only know of one customer with a lead line. But we also have 6,400 that we have no clue what their material is, and like I said earlier, we never tracked what the customer had in previous life, so. So what this means for the customer is, number one, we're getting lead out of the system, and if the customer, when we come across it, our lead service line, if they have lead or galvanized downstream of lead, then they're proposing to replace that at no cost to the customer. So that's a good thing. And in Tiffin, there's a lot of galvanized, a lot of galvanized on the customer's side. So that's the game plan. Like I said, only 20% of the people are responding, so what steps will we take after that? I don't have that answer right now, but it's probably boots on the ground, to be honest with you, and I don't know if there's going to be any, you know, people don't want to respond, or people don't want their yard tore up, or they want us to stay off their property. I don't know how that's going to work out right now, but I do know that we're going to be replacing all of our lead service lines in the City of Tiffin. They're proposing to have this done. The EPA wants it all out in 10 years. We're hoping to have it done between five and seven. Any questions on lead? And on that sheet that I hand out, the call center for them to call is our third-party call center. It's not Aqua. Now, if they have an issue, they'll reach out to us locally, but because this is a whole another can of worms that we need to deal with, why we're taking care of our customers on the other side, call center, we don't want to overwhelm them. Any questions? Oh, yes, sir.
Just want to clear, you're going to replace the lines that go like from the street to the house?
To the curb stop. Those are company.
But what's the curb stop?
From Water Main to the From Water Main to the curb stop, which is a box that's in the, between the tree lawn and the curb, the sidewalk and the curb, that's the main shut-off to the customer's home.
Okay.
So from that point to the home is their responsibility. And, and when I talk about lead service line or customer line, I'm not talking about whatever they ran in their house, nothing to do with what, that would be another can of worms, but it's just from the curb stop to inside their house or to the meter. That's their responsibility. But...
But it, it sounds like what you're going to replace is something that we can't see.
Yeah.
So how do we, how do we know what it is if we can't see it?
Well, wherever it comes in the house, whether it's in the basement, it's coming up in the utility room, your meter's going to be right there. There are meter pits out in some people's yards, Tiffin doesn't have a whole bunch of them, but wherever that line comes into the property, that's what we need to capture. That's what you need to, when you fill this out or do this, that's what you need to say. And they're even taking pictures. And then if, say you say that yours is lead, before it's going to be replaced, somebody from Aqua is going to come out and just verify it before we go and replace that line. This is, this is huge, this is major, and it's all across the United States, so I don't know how many billions this is going to cost. Anything else on lead? Yes, sir.
Do you have a professional or personal opinion or stance on whether we should filter our drinking water at this point?
Uh, my, no, you, you don't need to. We do, we test, we're testing water at the Tiffin plant 24/7. There's somebody always there 24/7 testing the water. We meet all EPA regulations. Actually, we do lead testing with our customers every year, so we have to pick 30 customers that are known company-led service lines that are feeding their home. But we have to rely on the customer to follow the directions to be able to collect those samples, and that's going to get more stringent after October on the LCRI rule when it comes out. They're going to want, instead of collecting one liter sample, they're going to want the customer to collect five. So every minute, collect another one, and then the first one and the last one will be kept, and the other one will be thrown away. And there's, there's, it's, there are strict collection rules that you got to follow, so you can't use the water for like six hours prior, then you got first draw. So, and, and we do lead testing every year. We used to be on triennial, and then we changed the treatment process, and we feed phosphate now to help coat the mains, so you don't have anything leaching out. So, we now are mandated to do it annually. So, it's 15 parts per billion is the, the trigger point, and we're at about 3.7 parts per billion. So, very minimal, but they're talking about lowering that 15 down to 10. Yes, sir.
Are you replacing galvanized as well as lead?
If galvanized is downstream of lead, yes. So if the customer's side is galvanized and our side's lead, it will all be replaced. That's what the proposed is.
Is galvanized generally older than lead?
Uh, it's probably about the same time. Obviously, I think it was a lot cheaper, that's why people used it, to be honest with you, but I'm just speculating.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a question. You had, excuse me, you had said you were concerned that people were just going to throw these away. Have you, have you approached the local media to, to help with that, to make, you know, make it more public for those folks?
Well, we're trying that in other locations, and we're hoping, Tiffin's got a great media following, so we're hoping that we can get the information out here locally, but, and we're hoping that the EPA will get the word out too, since they're driving this bus, but we haven't seen that participation yet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Scott, thanks for coming. I know you're here to talk about the pipes, but is there anything, I know there's some construction going on, is there anything that you can tell us about that?
Well, absolutely, I can. In 2024, we got five projects that we're doing water main replacement, we call them the Five Ms, because they're, they're Millmore, Madison, Miami, McCullough, and, did I say Miami? Maybe it's the four. So it's four of them, and we're getting ready to start McCullough here in the near future. That's, those projects, about 2.5 million. And I just wanted to state, since we became Aqua, we've invested around $25 million in Tiffin's infrastructure, and $9.5 million has been on water main replacements. And there's no water mains larger than two inches. The material's so heavy, they never, EPA has ruled that out, anything greater than two inches. There's no water mains that are made out of lead. It'd have been weighed tons, because it's pretty heavy stuff. But you know, we raise rates, and I just want people to know that we're investing back in the community. So, it's, it's come a long ways since 2013, so. And I have business cards to share with everybody, and I told the mayor, Nick, if you get any, I call them customers up here, Aqua customers, and if they got issues and they come to you, the best thing you can do is just get their contact information and get, get it to me, and I'll take care of it. That way, you won't be in the middle, but I guarantee you, we'll take care of it ASAP.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll get my cards.
Perfect.
Whoops. Is that any mine? Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Okay, we are under resolutions and ordinances.
We have ordinance number 2024-22, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $18,750 into the OPWC loan street paving budget.
Thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 24-22.
Ordinance number 2024-24, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $5,550 into the State Highway Improvement Fund budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-24.
Ordinance number 2024-25, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $5,000 into the TIFF2 South Schaefer Park Drive Fund budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-25.
Ordinance number 2024-26, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $50,000 into the ODNR Division of Forestry Fund budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-26. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of ordinance 2024-26, suspending City Council's three-reading rule.
Thank you. There is a motion for suspension of Council's three-reading rule and passage of ordinance 24-26. Is there a second, Councilmember Thacker?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion in the second, any discussion? Councilmember Reisner.
Just a point of appreciation to the Street Department for getting this grant around, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reisner.
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Snay.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Herniman.
Yes.
Kayler.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Reisner.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-26 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 2024-27, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $500 into the Police Budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-27.
An ordinance number 2024-28, introduced by Kevin Reisner, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget ordinance 23-94 to appropriate $146,000 into the Capital Improvement Budget and reduce funds by $146,000 in the Quarter Percent Income Tax Public Streets Fund.
Thank you. This is the first reading of ordinance 24-28.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we can stand adjourned. Thank you.